Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. We've got item one tonight, Resolution 2018-007, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Howie in the Hills, Florida, adopting a final milage rate of 9.2750 for the town of Howie in the Hills, Lake County, Florida, for added lower taxes for fiscal year 2018, 2019, providing for an effective date. The taxing authority is the town of Howie in the Hills. The rollback rate is 8.8056. The percentage over the rollback rate is 5.06 percent, and the milage rate to be levied is 9.2750 mils. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment regarding this issue only tonight. Is there any public comment regarding this milage rate resolution?
Hi. My name's Vance Chilcom. I write a local Lake County blog on fiscal issues, fiscalrangers.com. And I thought I'd come by here and see how your budget is doing. Last Friday, I was at Fruitland Park, and there was over 200 people in the new villages development who all showed up and raised hell and went on for four hours. So you guys are lucky you have the villages coming into your area. Since I know you're going to have a separate discussion on the budget, I just have the one question I've got about the village is when looking at the chart that actually the city of Fruitland Park put together, they showed that this city has got the highest milage rate of all the cities in the county. And so I thought maybe it would be helpful if you, and you may have done that at the first hearing or before, and yes, I haven't been at a bunch of hearings and that, but I think it would be helpful if maybe you just explained why or what the process is. And there could be some valid explanations, but I think I'd like to hear it. That's it.
Okay. Welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight. When it comes to the milage rate, the milage rate is really a function of, I think, the service level that the town is looking to have provided to its citizens. And when you look at Howie, it's a little different, it's much different than most municipalities in Lake County. We have no commercial base. It's really a state group of about 600 homes. They have to share the cost to run a police station, a public works department, a town hall, and then have recreation and parks and recreation and a library to serve its citizens. And so I've heard over the budget hearings, we've had several this summer, the milage rate currently is at 9.275. We looked at rolling it back. We looked at having a lower milage rate, and with the needs that we currently have in the town, the council felt like they wanted to leave it at 9.275 to be able to address all those needs that they saw. So that's where we're at at 9.275. So we'll have a vote in a few minutes. I did present two different budgets, one at 9.275, a second budget that I personally preferred that was at 8.875, because as we rolled the milage rate back up and ticked it up, as property values went down into 2008, 2009, 10 turned down when we were losing revenues, yet at the same time, our citizens wanted the same level of service. And I felt like as town times got better, we potentially could roll it back and take it back over a three or four-year period and get it back down. But at this point, until we get some more revenue coming in with new homes, I believe the council felt like the current service level that the town wanted, 9.275, was the rate that they settled on.
Well, I concur with that. You know, we don't believe enough here. Now, I'll tell you more, but the other is, we don't know what's going to happen at the polls, is another one, is that doubling of the homestead exemption passes, we're going to be staring at one another again next year to figure out how we're going to end the revenue.
Any other public comment regarding the milage rate tonight?
I guess I want to point out, too, that the budget is only going up 3 percent from 1522. Well, the current budget is 1524, and it's only going to 1565, which is a 3 percent increase. We, for years, have been, since I've been on council, I think the biggest raise we gave is maybe 2 percent. And we have, generally speaking, the lowest-paid employees in the county. So in your point about industry, just for people out there, I spent some time in Blowing Rock, North Carolina. They have the same footprint, the same number of people, and they have a $13 million budget, six times ours. Why? They're loaded with restaurants. I mean, but I'm not saying we could be like Blowing Rock, but I'm just saying the same number of people, same footprint, and when you have industry, it makes all the, even if it's a million or a half million dollars, it makes all the difference in the world.
Any other public comment tonight regarding the milage rate? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. Is there any council discussion regarding the milage rate? Okay. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Go to roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Proton David Niebel?
Yes.
Mayor Sears?
No.
Counselor Conroy?
Yes.
Counselor McFarland?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Very good. Thank you, counsel. Item two tonight is Resolution 2018-008, a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Howie in the Hills, Florida, adopting a final budget for the town of Howie in the Hills, Lake County, Florida, for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and providing for an effective date. The final budget for the town of Howie in the Hills for fiscal year 2018, 2019 to be adopted by the fund departments as follows. The general fund in the amount of $1,565,964. Special revenue fund in the amount of $118,000. Enterprise fund in the amount of $837,521. Police pension fund in the amount of $218,500. Total of all funds, $2,739,985. At this time, I will open the floor for public comment and questions regarding the budget tonight. Is there any public comment regarding the budget?
If you could just state your name and address. I have two questions. You have four categories, special revenue fund and enterprise fund. Educated as to what that entails.
The enterprise fund, I believe, is the water fund, water utility fund. Special revenue fund?
Is impact fees and police advanced training.
Okay. So that would be impact fees and police advanced training would be the special funds. So the general revenue is just the general ad liborum taxes and the state money that comes into the town, revenues that come into the town, less expenses. Special revenue fund is the impact fees that we receive from new development and also PAT fund. The enterprise fund is the water utility, so sewer water comes out of that. And the police pension fund is, of course, the pensions that our state statutes require us to have.
You said the enterprise fund is covered in utility?
It is.
And I get my bill every month, and I pay you that, because I lived, I used to live in Miami, and it's still within ear of what I used to pay in Miami. I mean, it's like three or four times what I can pay in Miami for show of war and trash pickup. I'm under that impression that that money goes to what?
Run the utility. They're two separate funds. So the general fund, ad liborum taxes and state revenues and any kind of fees that the town collects, stay on the general revenue side. On the utility or the enterprise fund, it has to be itself sufficient all by itself, so it doesn't receive any ad liborum taxes. It has to run only on the revenue that it?
It generates.
Correct.
But you said that it's in that category, the enterprise fund, the utilities, which is war too.
Correct.
So are they getting tax money or not?
I think I was pretty clear. They're not getting tax money. They're getting revenue. Their revenue comes only from, that's why they're enterprise fund, their revenue only comes from the revenue it produces based on water sales, wastewater sales, depending on where you are in town, and garbage collection service. That's their revenues.
But why would they be in their self-sufficient?
They're not self-sufficient.
The water company is self-sufficient.
They're over by themselves, all by themselves, not collecting tax dollars.
They're by themselves, and they're self-sufficient. Why would they be in this type of category?
Because the town's still running them, if I understand what you're asking.
I'm just trying to figure out what the numbers are.
Because if I am trying to understand is, we have a water company, if you will, for lack of a better term.
Right.
And so they have a profit and loss statement. And so all the money that it generates comes into the water company, for lack of a better word, and then they have their expenditures, and then they have a, I would call it, for lack of a better word, a sinking fund, because we have old pipes. In the past, we built a new water plant, so we invest in that company so we can meet all the federal, state, and local standards for water purity. That's a separate budget.
That category goes to fixing whatever is old.
Yeah, it runs the water company.
But it goes to the, it pays the expenses of that fund. So we have labor, we have some vehicles, a portion of vehicles. It has expenses, and then we also, capital improvements come for the water system only come, or wastewater system come out of that fund as well.
We don't spend water money on running the city, or the city doesn't spend money on running the water business, a water sewer. Does that make sense?
I don't know that I understand.
Thank you. Any other public comments or questions regarding the budget this evening?
Vance Chilcom again. I guess I come from Tavary, so I'm coming from the big city. Actually, I'm in the unincorporated area, so they see me quite often. I have some questions, but observations really about the budget and just to pass on. And I've gotten it written here. I'll give you a copy, so that's not for everybody. One is, I want to say kudos on providing four years of budget paid in columns. That's pretty rare. A lot of times I go to these budget hearings, and it almost intentionally looks like somebody doesn't want the city council or the residents to see what the prior years were so that they can see it, and you even have a percent change calculated there. So that's something I was used to seeing in the corporate world, so I'd say that improves your transparency, in my viewpoint. The prior budgets, I couldn't find on the website. I did see you sent a request in, but I haven't had time to get that. I would recommend you have at least five years' budgets on there, so that people who are higher than us. The online copy of the budget that is on the website, it's extremely hard to read, very, very light. And I don't know, you know, you're, you're, it's probably to save money on ink, but I would suggest that maybe you need a higher contrast print for that. There's no single-page recap at the top of the budget. You have 10 pages. By the way, my background is I was a corporate auditor of large companies and reviewed budgets everywhere, and so this leaked out at me. There's no single-page recap that shows revenues and expenses and the net figure so that you can clearly see in top view. Instead, you have to read through about 10 pages on revenues, like 34 pages on expenses, and then compare the two doubles that are each of those sections. And to provide a little bit better transparency, I think that there should be a top page that's a recap of the primary categories. And I would recommend having some bar graphs or something that visually show where the money is spread, rather than trying to analyze individual number lines. Yeah, graphs in there. And then a couple of general comments. Your website is extremely slow. It took over 60 seconds just to get to one of the pages. I would have somebody look at that, because it is, I mean, I almost quit and just left, and then finally, the elections page popped up, and I was reaching the conclusion that nobody was maintaining the website. So I would suggest that you test that and look at all the hosting firm that you deal with and ask to do some, run your own tests. And it isn't my system, because my panel is pretty fast. All right, and then something that I tell every city I go to is that I think you should look at trying to create videos of your meetings. And nowadays, you can do it with just a cell phone or a camcorder like I'm doing here, but with your equipment here, you could do it live. And the city of Mount Dora does do it live with a cell phone. However, they did stop it recently because they had to create a social media policy to meet ADA requirements, if you can believe that, for some issues. But the county does it. The county now is going to start doing it for the planning and zoning committee. And of course, they have a big fancy room to do that, and they have a staffer that's doing that. And I do acknowledge that you guys are a small city, you don't have the resources to do these things, but I throw them out there that maybe you add to them, because I think transparency with the ability to have live videos is a big leap forward in providing transparency to your residents. Now, Leesburg also does live streaming, and so does UZES, but they have more expensive equipment, and I wouldn't expect somebody your size in the city to go out and do that. But now you can go with just a cell phone. And then this video that I'm making here will be on my Fiscal Rangers Florida page to YouTube. So I'm going to do these handouts and wish you all well.
Very good. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
We have been working with the website to try to figure out what the issue is with the speed, and I was wondering, can I pass them your contact information?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. I used to be an information systems auditor, and I probably can talk fairly.
Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight or questions regarding the budget?
I move.
Let me go ahead and close public comment. Move on to council discussion.
Apparently, my recommendation to go to 5 percent cost of living was.
We said we were going to do that in October. But it wasn't intentional. We walked out of the meeting, and it was my people, we were looking at it in October. So with that, the motion's.
So moved.
Very good. So roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scott?
No.
Mayor Proton David Niebel?
Yes.
Mayor Sears?
Yes.
Counselor Conroy?
Yes.
Counselor McFarland?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, citizens, for coming out tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? And we'll pick our other meeting up in a few minutes.
So moved.
Thank you.
So I wanted to apologize for being late to everybody.
700, alternate key number 1257743, from medium-density residential to rural estate. So it's going from MDR-1 to rural estate. No.
Oh, there you go. You said so nicely. I'll read that again.
Just a quick comment. You might want to combine the public hearing for item two along with item three, because they're spaced.
Would you like me to just read this?
Please.
Ordinance number 2018-009, an ordinance of the town of Howie in the Hills, Florida, rezoning a 5.4-acre parcel of property located on South Lake Shore Boulevard, Lake County property appraisal, parcel number 35202501500004700, and alternate key number 1257743 for medium-density residential, MDR-1, rural estates, providing for conflicting ordinances, severability, codification, and effective date. And ordinance number 2018-10, an ordinance of the town of Howie in the Hills, amending the Town's Land Development Code, revising Table 2.00.02C in Chapter 2 of the Town's Land Development Code to allow a rural estate RE zoning district to be permissible in a medium-density residential 1, MDR-1, future land use, providing for conflicting ordinances, severability, codification, and effective date.
And counsel, you have behind tab two, your staff findings from Plan Vorowski. Do you have to lead us through that?
Okay. The application before you is to rezone a parcel which is on Lake Shore on the west side of the road. It's the kind of triangular-shaped parcel that sits immediately south of the school. The first ordinance proposal is to change the zoning from the current mixed and medium-density residential 2 to residential estate. The companion parcel is to make it, or excuse me, the companion ordinance is to make a change to the land development regulations to identify the residential estate as being consistent with your low-density residential and medium-density residential classifications. All ordinances need to happen in order for the zoning to change. There's, I think you have in your packet a report from me dated August 6th, which is the report that I prepared for the planning board. The planning board heard this at their last meeting, and they recommended the change too.
What was the vote?
Five nothing.
In order to make a zoning change, there are three things that need to happen. First is that we have to be able to demonstrate that the change meets concurrence, which is basically saying that the, with the change in place, that the town can still provide the necessary public services to the parcel. The second item that we have to address is whether the proposed change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then the third one is essentially that you agree with the value of the change and that you think that it has merit. Let me just, I'm not going to go over in detail all of the content of the staff report. I'm just going to touch on a couple of highlights. Concurrent, basically what you'll see as a result of this change is that the maximum number of dwelling units that could be accommodated on this parcel, and I want to say that's in theory, based on the, based on the allowed density in the comprehensive plan, wouldn't change, because we would still be under four units per acre, which is the allowed density for the residential mix, excuse me, for the residential medium density in our comp plan. Effectively, because the residential estate has a larger minimum lot size.
Two acres.
Yes. You will, you'll end up with fewer units on the parcel.
Well, you end up with basically two. The property's only 5.4 acres, so a little over.
And that's consistent with the applicant's intent for the parcel. In terms of consistency with the comp plan, the issue that we ran into when we looked at that was with the table that we have in the land development regulation, which identifies which zoning classifications are consistent with individual land use classifications. So when we're talking about a change here, we're talking about a change to the land development code and not a change to the comprehensive plan. The policy statement that we have on density in the medium-density residential is that development should not, cannot exceed a maximum of four units per acre. There's no floor on that. So essentially, anything down to zero is consistent with the policy in the comp plan. What we found when we looked at, it's Table 2.0002, your development code, is that residential estate was consistent, was identified as being consistent only with rural lifestyle land use. Well, we have the rural lifestyle, land, that's the phrase, land use on the comp plan, and we don't have any residential estate actually applied in the city. So what the planning board recommended to you is amending that table to make residential estate and also single-family residential consistent with both density residential and medium-density residential. And that would put us in a position where we would be able to apply that residential estate zone to this parcel instead of, as we would.
Thank you.
As we would residential in the comp plan. I know, you know, it's kind of a little technical in terms of how we get there, but it's not changing the comp plan, it's just changing a little bit of the land development code in terms of identifying what the zonings might be consistent. I think it's unlikely, as we look at the zoning map, that there's going to be a lot of property, there's some sort of interest in trying to take property that's now designated as MDR-1 or MDR-2 and have it resowned to residential estate. This particular tract, as you know, sits kind of by itself. It's, you know, we've got the Nezius subdivision behind it, we've got the, the school to the north, we've got the preserve across the street, and then the other area that it plugs up to is, is a rural zoning in Lake County, in the unincorporated area, and the densities in that area are consistent with what's being proposed here. At the end of the staff report on page five, we drew out for you the difference between the MDR-1 and the residential estate. Basically, as we indicated at the beginning, we have a much bigger lot size, two acres versus 15,000 square foot. The setbacks are a little bit larger. Maximum building size is a little smaller, or excuse me, minimum building size. The residential estate has, I think, a 1,500 square foot versus 1,700 in the MDR, and the both zones still require a 400 square foot area and a garage.
Can you use the microphone, please? We can't all hear back here.
Okay. So, you know, that, if we address the consistency by adopting the amendment to the land development regulations concurrent with the rezoning, that will resolve the consistency problem as we indicated. Concurrent is not an issue here, and then it's just in question whether that change is fine relative to the development throughout that area of the city.
And it's an excellent change. It gets right across from our Sarah Mod, which means we have less density, perhaps with runoff, we have more, less runoff and everything else, so very much in favor.
So moved. That's what you're aiming for.
It is. We're approving both ordinance 2018-009 and 2018-10 in the same motion or we're doing.
I think you should do them separately and in its first reading.
So again, in its first reading, so you moved that motion for ordinance 2018-009.
We need one for the second one. So moved.
Is there any further council? Is there any further council comment regarding? Is there any further council comment regarding this item tonight?
I agree with you. I think it's a good choice.
Any public comment regarding this item tonight? Roll call vote please.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Mayor President David Niebel?
Yes.
Mayor Sears?
Yes.
Counsel Conroy?
Yes.
Counsel McFarland?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Good. Thank you. Move on to the new business portion of our agenda tonight. We've got discussion for item four regarding irrigation wells, which I think we had a drought of irrigation wells for a while, but now it's coming back, sorry. So is there any, any discussion regarding where we want to go with this?
I don't know. Can you refresh us all on what is our past, seeing it had been a drought? What has been our past policy and what are the St. John's Water, what are the requirements of county, et cetera?
Can we have our own permits and allow to have irrigation wells or not irrigation wells?
Your code right now has requirements regarding permits on wells, so I'd have to see what it says right now.
Okay.
We currently use Lake County. We don't permit, we're going to Lake County.
So currently, if someone wants an irrigation well, they go to the county, get a permit. Anybody can get a permit in the city and they can go off irrigation.
What we have now?
Can we make it so that they have to come see us to get one?
I'm sure we could have Heather research it.
Why would you want to do that?
Isn't the issue right now of Benesia? We've got irrigation meters in there and if people are putting in their own wells, now, now what do we do with the other meter?
Yes.
Believe it in, take it out, turn it off, charge them, don't charge them, what?
And that's, I think, what led to this discussion is where, if you're allowed to put an irrigation well in, what happens to that irrigation meter and the monthly charge on it?
Seems to be two separate issues. I don't think we'd have control of putting wells in, that's the county and/or the state. So we really couldn't stop them. The question is, what do we do? I ought to be using there. John, I don't think we're ready to talk about that.
Well, I think, I think we can send this back and let Heather do some research in terms of what is our, what is our, what's our responsible action on our behalf? What are we, what can we do and what can't do and bring this back in the future meeting? So if we could just maybe get a staff report.
How much is installed? About $800.
We've got money invested.
Say it louder. So the meter installed?
Roughly $800 installed, plus the service, monthly service charge.
Which even off is 24/23 availability?
There's availability for you whether it's on or not. If we cut it off, I can cut them off. I'm not taking either end.
But I think the first step is to see what we can do, or what we are allowed to do or not do, and then we can bring this back in the next meeting if it's on. I mean, we, as we know, with the water system the way it is, we have a lot of assets that we're paying for on a regular basis that we need to cover those costs. I understand people trying to save money, but I think this is a discussion we need to have here in October to decide which direction we can go.
I think we can, what other cities do, and then we got future subdivisions. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a very good area for, you know, a good public discussion.
Yes.
Because you do it here, what, what do you do it next time, but you got to plan for it, one way or the other. I don't, I have no direction at all right now.
Okay. So we'll bring this back up in October and take a look at it, see which direction we want to go. We'll move on to board reports. We've got behind tab five, we have the library board minutes. Tara's here tonight. Welcome, Tara.
Is there anything that, any events or anything to add for the library board? I can tell you, I can tell you that, there was, the county is requiring us to do an inventory. Tara?
We can't hear.
Here we go. The county has required us to do an inventory of every single book in the library. So that's what we've been doing for the last month. It's a huge project. We have over 12,000 items in that library. So we're in the last section, which is, my volunteers have been incredible working on it. So we have that big project. After that, we have to weed out another project. And then a third project, we're working on something for the early readers. So we have a lot of projects going on in the library, so we're staying very busy, plus the regular programs we have each month. Any questions?
Awesome. Thank you.
My compliments. Once again, I can do it later, but your Friday night things are well attended and really add, like, a lot of extra culture to the...
I was going to say sophistication, yes.
That doesn't pay off.
Maria that was there Friday night is performing at Carnegie Hall in November. She has her violin and we're hoping she, maybe back in October, we're not sure.
What, was she 12?
16, actually.
Wow. She was, I didn't know how old she was. She's small. I don't know. I don't have kids, so.
Very good. Item six tonight is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board reported minutes. Item seven is the Planning and Zoning Board minutes. Okay, all right. Item 7A, code enforcement, please report.
We'd like to remind everybody to lock their cars. We had an issue recently where two cars were entered, so they're both were unlocked. So please lock your cars.
Very good. Any questions?
Do you want to make any comment about the county's activities on Palm today, or is that...
Well...
Everybody, we got an email from Rick and I'll let you go.
Well, to be honest, I don't know much about it. They didn't tell us until they were already there, which they don't have to, to be honest. So for those of you that saw a lot of activity on the north, I'm sorry, south Palm behind the market, Sheriff's Office and Florida Department of Law Enforcement did serve a search warrant on residents. I like to tell you it's cyber crimes, which typically means it's internet or computer involved. Apparently through that ordeal, another house was linked to that because they were sharing the internet connection. So, which resulted in a second search warrant of another house. So I'm sure they left, there were boxes of computers and et cetera, so. They didn't tell us what the extent of it was, but typically if it's cyber related, it's either foreign or fraud. So they didn't tell us what it was and if they're going to ask, they probably won't tell us anyways. It's very protective.
Any other questions of chief tonight? Item eight is the finance report. Any questions on the finance report? Item nine, you get the impact fee balances. See the totals there?
How many Benesia lots are permitted still to be pulled or...
All the lots are currently sold as Meritage Homes. They're the new builder. They came in and bought the remaining lots. They're actually in the process of getting their models approved and after that, they plan to start rapidly finishing out Benesia's sale.
Item 10 is the library director's report, or Tara's. Any other questions for Tara? Item 11, public services report, and that's reflected in the staff minutes. Any questions to John, Public Services or Water? Item 12 tonight, it's the town hall report. Anything to report on town hall?
...
All right. We'll move on to council comments tonight. Is there any council comments? I'll start on this side. Counsel McFarland?
Yep. I agree.
Just one thing on mine, as we continue to work on the Benesia project to see where we can get a possible pathway and working with the school board, I'm in discussions with them now to see what they'll possibly allow us to do and who might bear those costs and how we can make that work for everybody. So hope to bring something back by next, the next meeting where we are exactly and how quickly we can try to move forward with it.
Have you had any discussion with the people, I don't know if they're even here, but who are requesting the zoning change?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not. Only, only the school board because we're going to need them as a willing partner to be able to do any of that. We'll move on tonight to public comments. Any person wishing to address the mayor and town council who's not on the agenda is asked to complete a request to address the mayor and town council form. Form must be completed and provided to the town clerk or you can just leave it at the lectern and three minutes is allocated to each speaker. Is there any public comments tonight?
My name is Sal Alawee, the Women of Corner of Tangerine, Hollins. I wish there was a way to let the citizens know when there is an event where there's an illegal entry into vehicles so that other citizens can become aware. I don't know if that means email or what, but there's got to be a better way to do that so, you know, other people, and maybe they might spot somebody who's up in over there.
Yeah, I think we talked about this at the last meeting and Rick was working towards some type of solution to be able to let people know on a, on a rapid basis, I guess, to, so they can protect their valuables or homes and are you still looking into that on how we might be able to...
Yeah, we have social media. To be honest, we have been tied up with the budget adjusting numbers. So it's like a whole dering down low and up and we can actually put all of our social media here, kind of social. The meat of the record laws will work on that, but kind of it...
Is that, would that be your plan, is to let people know on faith by way of social media, aid or was it break in or...
It's probably one of the best methods for us, only because, but the other problem is a lot of people are not on social media. So I don't know. I think Daring has an email blast, that's a possibility.
We do.
But then we run into issues where I don't want, I don't want them to know my email address. It's kind of a never ending solution, to say the least, but it is in the process. We are working on it.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight?
John Ellis, 135 West Line. I have one for the chief. Chief, have you found out any more about God Park crossing?
I actually sent an email out today. They didn't send me the information and I'm still waiting to hear back from their engineer.
So what timeframe do you think you're looking at?
To be honest with you all, I can't answer that because I'm at DOT's mercy here. So the engineer asked me to send him a list of streets, proposed crossings. I have done that and I'm waiting on them to let me know.
Could I state representative of that way?
It's a possibility, but I think right now we're down one. We're down one representative. Out of the House of Senate, he is...
The House, the House.
The House, yeah, so. But you know, a state legislator, you're more welcome to call them.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight?
Marie, Marie Galaway, Women of Corner of Tangerine. On the thing with notifying people on social media, could that be something you could put on the water bill? I'm not saying every month, but after, right after something happens, to put that in the notes or whatever you call it, to put it on the water bill.
It's a possibility.
I don't know if people read it, but for people who don't have social media...
That's a possibility.
It's another way to get people who maybe do read their water bills to anticipate. Wasn't tonight the night that the Talashay guys were supposed to come back with their proposals after the last meeting a month ago or no?
If they were going to, if they were going to move forward, I think he regrouped and it was his option.
Oh, they withdrew their application.
Correct.
Oh, really? Explain about the irrigation wells at Benesia in the earlier conversation. I thought irrigation wells were just for irrigation, but they're still using the meters of Benesia for drinking water and showers? No?
No. They have, they have two meters. One for domestic water, potable water, one for irrigation.
So they will still be using the one meter?
Yes, they still have to use the potable water.
Okay. But the other they don't?
They want to cut the irrigation out, yeah.
Well, that, I think that's what the council is discussing. Because I know the town has spent money for a CUP for Benesia and the different subdivisions and there's ongoing cost with that CUP. So I think we just have to look, go back and look and see what, you know, what it costs, what it has cost to have Benesia come into, into town and what it costs our, you know, our regular, or the houses that were here pre-2005 and look at our costs and see what that would be running to make sure we're covering our costs if we were to allow the removal or not of their irrigation meter. I mean, there's, there's a couple of pronged approaches that we really need to look at before.
Last comment. If people want to build a well, I don't think we need another layer of government of Howie getting in the way of somebody wanting to build, to get, dig their own well. They're going to pay for the permit and whatever's involved with digging it. We need to, in my opinion, we need, Howie needs to stay out of that. That's a personal opinion of a person on the moment. That's all.
Any other public comments tonight? Any more public comments? Well, then, thank you tonight. Is there, we have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Appreciate it.